This is the November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Shrewsbury Select Board. I'm Beth Cassavan. I'm the chair, and we're just going to take a moment to go around and introduce ourselves for people that are watching at home and also in the audience.
Hi, I'm Teresa Flynn.
Michelle Conlin.
Carlos Garcia.
John Samia.
Kevin Mizikhar, Town Manager.
Justin Dobson, Assistant to Town Manager.
Okay, the first item on our agenda is to approve the bills, payrolls, and warrants.
Move approval?
So move, uh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number two is to approve the minutes of October twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, which was a meeting, and November seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, which was a workshop.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chairman, I, Madam Chair, I just will abstain from the minutes for October twenty-fourth as I was not present.
Okay, very good. For announcements and reports, there's just one that I have, is that there is an additional yard waste drop-off event on Saturday, December second, from eight AM to noon at the Highway Garage located at two-eleven South Street. Does anybody else have any announcements this evening? Okay, then we'll move on to item number four, which is the manager's report. Manager's informing, he doesn't have anything this evening, so we'll go right on to number five, which is public comment pursuant to Select Board Policy thirty-one to offer citizens the opportunity to provide public comments during Select Board meetings on matters within the board's authority. No one has come forward this evening looking to provide comment, but if someone's interested in the future, please just contact the Select Board's office the Monday before the meeting and be happy to add you to the agenda. I also know that this evening, Select Board Member Garcia and Flynn both participated in office hours. That is, again, an opportunity for members of the community to speak with members of the Select Board, and we hold office hours right before our meeting on the second Tuesday of the month, and then on the third Saturday, which is coming up, we'll be at the library from eleven to noon. Item number six is seven oh five, and it's not time, so we're going to have to just skip down and, I think I can do number, just number twelve? Okay. I'm going to skip down to item number twelve under new business, which is to review and act on the road closure request for Stony Hill Road from Austin Zanino, Jay Masterson Construction Corporation for a water connection for five days between November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and November twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three, excluding Saturday and Sunday from seven AM to five PM. So, find this. Did you want to add anything?
I mean, it has been reviewed and approved internally by all the departments, and we'd recommend the board move forward with the plan as requested.
Okay, so this is having to do with the construction at Point Hills Farm Development, which is between the two Stony Hill Road entrances, because there would be work done to connect to the water and sewer, I believe, right? And there's not enough room to get a car through because of the location of the main being in the middle of the road, and so we need to be able to close the road for the five-day period in order to allow for that work to be done. And I think I read that they don't anticipate it being closed until five o'clock each day. So, I think there's, is there, there's someone?
I'm Austin.
Okay, why don't you come on up?
Hi, Hori.
Hi.
So, we are requesting closure between the hours of seven and five during the day, and the road will open back up at nighttime with steel plates and protection around the construction site. And, yeah, it's, um, the water has to cross the entire roadway, so we'll need to close it at some points just for access purposes and logistics-wise.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions from the board?
So, just to clarify, this would require residents in the Stony Hill neighborhood to use the other entrance? So, it would?
East entrance, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. And it doesn't, this won't impact any residences, like people being able to access their homes?
No, it's in between.
And school department's been notified for bus purposes, emergency vehicle purposes, so we're all, all set. Okay.
May I ask?
Sure.
Maybe two questions. We did get a resident come to our office hours. Just to clarify, the blasting that is, I think that's, is it currently in process or has that ended?
It's currently in process.
Is process. So, is that expected to end before this work begins, or is there an overlap?
There is a slight overlap, yes.
Okay. Do you know how much?
It'll prob, the water work will probably be completed before the blasting.
Okay. And if residents have a question regarding that, where should we direct them?
They can come to myself directly. The Fire Department is the permit issuing authority for blasting.
Okay.
Along, yeah, but they can come to us. We've fielded them in the past and happy to get them answers.
Okay, thanks. May I ask one follow-up?
Sure.
And I noted that there was a, there's going to be a police detail. Is the police detail where the road closure is, or is there going to be sort of assistance at the other end if there's? I know it's a difficult traffic area, but is the police detail intended to be right at the closure, or is there anything at the other side?
I don't know.
That was what the, what was anticipated, that the police detail would be right at the closure for kind of protection around the work site.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
I just have one, one follow-up from Vice Sheriff Flynn's comments or questions. So, we don't anticipate that the blasting will be delayed, the schedule for blasting?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? So, again, as road commissioners, this falls under our jurisdiction, and questions about the blasting, I think will have to be directed to the Fire Department if residents have them, or to the Town Manager's Office. This board doesn't authorize the blasting permit. Okay, so I'll take a motion.
May I ask one more question?
Sure.
I'm sorry. Do residents get notified when a road is closed?
Yes, there is notification of the road being closed. There will be signage, I believe, that goes up the day before, if I read correctly in the memo that I received. So, there will be signage put up the day before.
Okay, and is there, like, a direct contact to residents?
I mean, we can issue a code red, call the evening before for the anticipated schedule.
I think that would probably be helpful, because it's such a large neighborhood that, you know, a lot of people would be coming that way. So, I think that may be a helpful thing for the neighborhood. Okay, sure, thanks.
Motion to approve the road closure request from Jay Masterson Construction Corporation for Stony Hill Road from November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three to November twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three, excluding Saturday and Sunday, from seven AM to five PM each day.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're all set, thank you. All right, we can go back now to item number six, under meetings and hearings, which is a seven oh five PM public hearing regarding the application of Scaff Vineyard and Winery, Inc., DBA Broken Creek Vineyard, six fourteen South Street, for a pledge of its farmer winery pouring permit to Bay State Savings Bank. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Could just introduce yourself.
My name's Jonathan Finkelstein. I'm an attorney in Worcester.
Josh Scaff, the owner.
Thanks for being here, nice to meet you both. So, this is pretty straightforward, looking to approve this pledge of license, which is just a financial transaction with a license. You're offering your farmer winery pouring permit as collateral for a loan issued from Bay State Savings Bank, so.
That's correct. We'll also be doing the same with the state for the farmer winery license.
So, it doesn't affect your business operation, it doesn't affect your hours, it's?
No, the money's already been loaned, this is just additional collateral for the bank.
All right. Any questions from board members? Okay, this is a public hearing, is there anyone from the public wishing to be heard? Okay, I'm not seeing anyone.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve the pledge of license application of Scaff Vineyard and Winery, Inc., doing business as Broken Creek Vineyard.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're all set, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Happy holiday.
Thanks, you as well.
Do I have to wait for the one-day permit?
You do not.
I'm good.
Yeah, you're fine, thank you. All right, item number seven is a meeting with Kim Lundgren of Kim Lundgren Associates, Inc., regarding the Shrewsbury Municipal Climate Action and Resiliency Plan.
She just stepped off for a second, she'll be right back, I think.
Okay, great.
I hope.
Get, get the presentation set up, and hopefully she'll be back in. Is it all her, or do you have something?
I, I can open.
Okay.
So, I'm here with Kim Lundgren from, of KLA, who was our consultant on the Municipal Climate Action and Resiliency Plan. We've started developing this a little over a year ago with our internal team that included myself, Assistant Town Planner Louise O'Neil, Communications Coordinator Taylor Galusha, and Sam Mackin of DPW. This was guided by Kim and her team, and along the way, we worked with many town staff and community members to develop what we feel will help municipal departments meet the challenges of climate change moving forward. Kim will take us through the, the entire process and give a overview of, of the plan and how we developed it, and how, some of the goals and actions and strategies that throughout the process, so, perfect timing.
Thanks for the grandad. Apologies. Oh, yeah, jump in.
Yep, that's you.
Good evening, I'm Kim Lundgren, CEO of KLA, and we've had the pleasure of working with your town staff on the All In Shrewsbury Plan. I think you have the presentation, and it's up on the screen. You know, as we all know, unfortunately, we are experiencing the impacts of climate change every day. We're seeing it all around the country, we're experiencing it here in Shrewsbury. Unfortunately, the town decided to lead by example for the community and say, how can we first start with looking at our operations as a town and create a more sustainable and climate-friendly situation, leveraging some State of Massachusetts funding to do so? So, when we got started with All In Shrewsbury, the plan was to set up some goals specifically around, how can we integrate sustainability and climate-friendly practices into the daily operations of the departments? How can we thinking about that? How can we reduce the contribution to climate change that currently comes from town operations? And then looking at opportunities, as noted here, wanting to save money and resources, create more efficiencies, which I know is already a priority for the town, and preparing the community overall for, for a change in climate and what that looks like. Next slide. We have worked the most of this calendar year on this project, and there have been some key milestones. Our first step, which is always the case, is to do an assessment. Where do you currently stand? Taking a look at all the energy use and emissions from your facilities, operations, fleet, waste, you name it, and given that there is a municipal utility here, the town's in a very unique position to actually have a huge impact, not just on your operations, but on the community as a whole. So, we wanted to assess all the opportunities and where you currently stand. We then worked with an advisory group to identify goals, strategies, and actions based on that data, so looking at where do you stand, and then what does it look like to get to what science is saying we need to, which is a zero percent reduction, or hundred percent reduction by two thousand and fifty, so basically being at zero greenhouse gas emissions in two thousand and fifty, recognizing, though, that in order for us to hit that target, which seems far away, we really need to have a very aggressive target for two thousand and thirty. And so, we worked with the advisory group to identify those goals and actions, and then created the roadmap, all the while doing engagement related to solutions and understanding barriers and opportunities for them, and I'll talk about that in a second. So, the inventory showed us what's pretty typical, which is that, you know, the majority of the greenhouse gas emissions from municipal operations are coming from the town facilities, which includes the schools. That's typical, buildings are often our number-one culprit. Employee commute was actually a pretty large percentage of your emissions. You do have folks, some communities have residency requirements, Shrewsbury doesn't, so you've got folks that are commuting from all over, and given that, you know, you're not in an area that has a lot of easy public transit, there's not a lot of options for folks, so it's not too surprising to see that. There have certainly been a lot of improvements and opportunities in the vehicle fleet, but those emissions were about sixteen percent. And then looking at energy for water and wastewater, that's your pumps, and moving the water around, treating it, and then solid waste in streetlights and traffic lights are coming in at the end. What we like to think of this as is, these are your opportunities for enhancements, so looking at ways you can not only reduce emissions, but save money, create efficiencies in the work that you're doing, and fortunately, right now, take advantage of a lot of federal grant and tax rebate opportunities that didn't used to be available to municipalities.
Right.
Inclusivity is a key tenet of, of Shrewsbury in general, and it certainly was a big part of this planning process, and so the town was very clear that we wanted to make sure we were engaging not just town staff in this, but also the community at large. And I have to say, having done this work personally for over twenty years with local governments all over the country, that's very impressive, that the town government wanted to include the broader community in the development of a government operations plan. It shows that this really is an open government and inclusive environment. And so, we had a thirty-seven-member advisory committee, which was, as I said, mixed. We had folks from every department that was relevant here, as well as a number of community folks that participated in that. In addition, we had, we did have a survey specific for town government employees, so we could understand what are some of those opportunities as it relates to your day-to-day work, as it relates to your commute here? What are some of the challenges that you have with making decisions that might be more appropriate or more sustainable for the town? And then how can we work with you to overcome those barriers? That's really how the focus is, and so, we had that survey, almost three hundred town staff were involved in the transportation survey, we had over two hundred on the general sustainability survey, and then we still had about over two hundred from the community. So, we did let folks know, hey, the town government is taking this on, we want to lead by example, so we did have some good responses from the, the public survey. Also, I do want to point out, the town staff just did an amazing job going out and letting folks know about this. I think one of the biggest challenges in local government, we're so busy doing the good work, we sometimes forget to tell people what we're doing, and I did want to give a lot of kudos to the All In Core team here with the town, because they did go out, they were hitting farmers' markets and food truck Thursdays, and really getting out, doing some virtual events, presentations to community groups, so the community was really made aware of what the town was trying to accomplish, which is impressive. Next. So, the, we always create our plans around kind of guiding principles, and the reason for this is, well, I'll show you in a second, is that we folk, get in onto like specific focus areas, right? And it sometimes could be easy to say, oh, I'm focused on transportation, I'd want to talk about everything related to transportation, which is great, but we want to make sure we're looking at our guiding principles, so we don't get lost and forget why we're trying to do this and what we're trying to accomplish. So, we worked with the core team to develop these equity, integrity, and transparency, resilience of all kinds, social, environmental, and economic, and then greenhouse gas emissions reductions. Those were the core guiding principles that we put together for this planning process. In every step of the way, we were making sure that these were lenses that we were using, so any action that's in the plan was run through this lens to make sure that it was applying these principles appropriately. Next slide. The plan itself has five focus areas. These are fairly typical focus areas, but also because it's government operations, we have a very specific focus area around resilient operations, so looking at clean energy and efficient buildings, and, and we decided to go with kind of visionary focus areas. This could just be like buildings, transportation, fleet, whatever, right? But the idea is, we wanted to have these be more representative of where we want to get to, and so these focus areas are covering all the areas that the town government touches. Your buildings and facilities, your energy use and your supply, your resilient operations, and that's looking at, you know, emergency preparedness opportunities, as well as just redundancies and whatnot in your, in your operations, smart waste and water management, sustainable transportation, which is looking at your fleet and other transportation options, and then vibrant natural resources, so recognizing the role that the town government plays in protecting and preserving the natural resources of the town. For this slide, we just wanted to have some context for you. I know you all have, have seen the plan and been looking through it, but we think it's helpful, as climate action plans are developed in different ways, this is the framework that we used, specifically because we want to make sure that we are making this an actionable plan, and that was something that was really important to the town team as well, that this wasn't just a plan that would sit on a shelf. So, we bring it down to what we call the action level. Our goals are really meant to be very visionary. This is that end state, this is where we want to get to. Then we get into the strategy, which is more of that higher level, like building decarbonization, we know we have to do that, but then a lot of plans will stop there. That's not super helpful, how is that actionable? There's still a lot that needs to go through to understand, okay, well, where are we starting? How are we doing that? And that's where the actions come in, where they provide you a more implementable and actionable plan, where it's getting more specific, so rather than just saying, we need to do building decarbonization, you said, well, you know, maybe we need to first assess where all of our buildings are at, what our opportunities are for that, efficiency opportunities, et cetera, and so there's an example of that for you. And then we also have very specific metrics, which are the data that you're tracking. Sometimes it's easy to forget that greenhouse gas emissions are just one metric of the plan, and frankly, they're not one that's going to be updated pretty regularly, so you'll see in the plan, there's a number of other metrics for each focus area that are data points that are collected more frequently than greenhouse gases will be, and will be a better indicator of your progress. And we set targets for those as well. And then really, the next step is, you know, moving forward on implementation. One of the big priorities out of the plan was to create a green team, and there was a lot of enthusiasm for that in the advisory group meetings, wanting to understand from town staff, what are the training and tools that you need? We talked a lot about the lack of training for, you know, mechanics for electric vehicles. What are, how do they take care of those cars? The state needs to be helping municipalities with that more. Ensuring financially responsible approach in general. Of course, fiscal responsibility was a huge priority. This is, you know, taxpayer dollars, we want to make sure that we're being as efficient as possible. And then tracking and sharing progress, and we do have an online dashboard that I know Keith is going to show, where the town's holding itself accountable to everything it's committed to here. And then I think there, there's some interest in maybe taking this planning process to the broader community, so that we can start helping the community take action, because ultimately, the local government emissions are only two percent of what your community is. So, while leading by example is very important, and I think it's a, the smart way to go for the town, we also need to make sure that each individual and business are set up for success to do this as well, because you really need to be all in on achieving your future resilient and sustainability goals. And last is a QR code that can be used, and it is on the site, do you want to?
Yep, so this QR code takes us to the, to our new, brand-new uploaded today, All In Shrewsbury Action Plan website, so this will have our dashboard for tracking metrics, and also has the information about how the plan was formed, and then the actual plan itself is now on that to share with the community. So, we encourage community members to, to look at this and read about it, and then on, on our side, we will be working with our municipal team to implement all of these goals, actions, and strategies, and, and as Kim mentioned, create a green team and really put us at the forefront of tackling climate change as a community. Do you have to take any questions if anybody has any?
Questions from board members? Or comments?
Just a, a quick question. The goals are outlined in here, you have the business champions, you have the timeline to implement. How will this be communicated? How and when, and how often, and, you know, what's? We have goals, aspirational goals, but how is there accountability with it?
So, so that's why we created the dashboard online, so that people can track our progress through these goals. One thing about these, this type of plan is, it's not, it can't be stagnant, so we have to review this regularly, update it on a yearly or every-two-year basis to, because we, because there are, there are many things in this plan that we're doing now, and as we achieve those goals, we can't just say it's over, like, we have to move forward with new goals and reassess as we move along, so.
So, will it be the business champions that do that, so you will have the goals? You're right, things are going to shift, two thousand and thirty, we have goals.
Well, it'll be us internally.
Okay.
Municipal government, we will be the champions of this, because it is the municipal plan, so it's, it's just continued improvement with, within municipal government. When we get to a community plan, that's where residents and businesses will be the champions of those, of that type of plan.
So, in the dashboard, there are opportunities to present, whether it's a town meeting or one of our meetings, or other ways, okay? Because the dashboard?
I, I even foresee an, like, at least an annual report.
Okay.
Type of, type of situation.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I would just add, the annual reports are very typical, that you would be reporting out. The only other thing I'd note, too, is in these blueprints that you, that you saw, these champions are, are aware of these actions, a lot of them are part of the advisory group, and so they helped develop these particular blueprints. So, they weren't just kind of handed these actions, they were actually part of creating them and identifying them as priorities.
Thanks.
Can you talk a little bit more about the green team concept, just for people who might be watching at home and aren't sure what that actually means? Because it's instrumental in the plan, plan success. Yeah, this is a very common practice among local governments. It's really a great opportunity to have that interdepartmental collaboration and communication. Everybody comes at sustainability from a different perspective, based on what their day-to-day requirements are, and what we typically see a green team would do, you know, they would be charged with, in, you know, making sure implementation of the plan is happening, so they almost become a bit of an internal accountability board for yourselves to make sure that things are moving along as, as mapped out, if there's hurdles, helping overcome. I think they're also a great team to be working with some of the key staff with, you know, a lot of these federal dollars that are coming out, you all are part of the central region for the EPA's Climate Pollution Reduction Grant. There's going to be a regional climate action plan that comes out for that. The green team can play a role in trying to make sure that some of your key actions are included in that plan, and we'll help you with this, too, make sure some of those actions are included in that plan, so you can then be eligible for funding from the federal government, and the grant implementation, you know, that it's anywhere from two million to five hundred million dollars that's available, so it's not an insignificant amount, and given that you're one of the communities in the region that has its own climate action plan already, the timing is really great here. So, that's, that's just one role, and on top of educating their own departments and helping, you know, create new processes, but they tend to start as, some of them just have started ad hoc, but when they're starting with a plan to implement, it creates a nice structure to keep them moving, and then it's something that can evolve in a way that makes sense for the town. I don't know if you want to speak more specifically to Shrewsbury, but?
No, so, so we have to, we're working on determining an internal team for that, and how we're going to work with department heads to help them help us be better, so.
Thank you. Other questions or comments?
Um, so, I think, I like the idea of an annual report, an update, you know, during, you know, whether it's our budget process or whatever, having, you know, making sure that this remains a priority. So, I'm interested to see where we go with it, so this is, I think it's very important work, so I'd like to keep it, keep it on the forefront of our decision-making.
Sure.
So, thank you. Go ahead.
And I would just like to echo Ms. Conlin's comments. I, looking through the dashboard, I think it's a very cool, very neat tool for us to track our progress, so appreciate, appreciate this tool, and I, what I really like about this, too, is that there are opportunities for folks at home to start implementing this plan themselves to become, to help us become more sustainable in total versus just the municipal operations, so certainly encourage folks at home to, you know, take a look at the dashboard. Each of the action items has specific things that we want to tackle and complete, which I think is great, so certainly, you know, look forward to annual reports on that. I, I guess just my follow-up question on that, will the dashboard be updated annually, or will that be updated more regularly as we're?
At least annually, it could potentially be more frequently as we, as we move forward in each goal, goal area.
Yeah, and I'll just note with the dashboard, it's designed for a general audience, right? I think sometimes when we I think sometimes when we hear dashboard, we think a bunch of data and spreadsheets and tables, which personally I love, but it's not really something that inspires folks to action. And so our dashboard leverages a storytelling framework, so that for folks who might be new to this topic or just might not understand what the opportunities are for them and what the town's doing, it's meant to be a far more inviting and accessible platform. So you can come in and you're not just, you know, getting data thrown around. You're rather, you're telling a story. You're being told a story around what, what's been done, why are we doing this, what are we doing, where do we want to get to, where are we at now, how are we getting there? And then how can you be part of the solution? So kind of just following that, that framing. And then as part of it, we do provide communication support for the dashboard. This way, like any site on, on the internet, you've got to drive your own traffic there. And so that will be another way that folks will constantly be seeing. What's nice about the dashboard is, for the most part, in our experience with folks, don't look at the whole thing at once, right? So if we put out a post, let's say, you know, December tends to be a time when we talk a lot about waste, right? With the holidays and everything, there's a lot of waste. So that could, we start putting out messages around that. The social media or newsletter might pump people to a specific part of the dashboard. They'll stay there. They might read through that. But then there's opportunities to keep having them come back for other information. And that tends to be very successful when we're driving it either from social or a newsletter that's popular or whatnot.
Thank you.
Just a quick question. How do you see this being weaved into the budget process? So we know when budget timing begins with the department heads. Will this be mid-cycle or before that cycle, or how will it inform the budget?
You mean like implementing, um, actions?
Yeah. I mean, some are going to be more practices, right?
Right. And, and I think a lot of them are, and like, we do a very good job with, with, with savings and efficiencies here. So, so we're a little step ahead there, but, you know, typical projects, when we're trying to, for example, electrify a building or something like that, we're going to go through the same type of budget process that we do now. You know, determining the best course of action and the best process and the best outcome for the community. I don't, I don't think it will change much of our actual process. Some of the things that we do will, you know, they may cost more money than if we would just did it the old way. So there's that. So I think it's a, you know, it's a collaboration through all, with all departments as we, you know, work to improve, like I said, like many of the things that we're, we're doing. But to meet our goals, you know, there, there will be some times when we will have to, you know, really, really dig in and determine if that's the way the community wants to go, you know, because there, because there is a financial impact to our residents, and we understand that.
So it can be identified during the implementation process or identification, what that would be? And the cost impacts of that, that could inform future budgets together with the forecast that we have, living within the constraints, some of being capital, which is different. Okay. All right. Got it.
And I would just add, if it's okay, there are some tools and analyses there that help do what's called a sustainable return on investment or the triple bottom line, so that you're not just looking at things in dollars, but rather thinking about maybe this costs in dollars a little bit more, but it's actually going to help, you know, reduce air quality, reduce health costs, you know, looking at all of these other types of metrics that are part of creating a more resilient community. And that could be helpful for decision-making for you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I, I think the website is great. I particularly like the format of the what you can do section, because I think that, you know, my, my honest reaction is with the dashboard, I'm sort of accustomed to an at-a-glance, like your dashboard kind of gives you the full picture, and then you can drill in from there. And I do think that maybe as we, you know, implement this plan, and then we have outcomes that we are reporting to, or progress to goals, we can consider that. But I was happy to hear you say that communication approaches, approaches will be targeted. Because again, this is like pretty overwhelming, I think, to an average person. I think everybody would likely like to do their part. So I will be interested to see how we can focus people on, you know, sort of their part in this, because to your point, sort of the government function can only do so much. We won't make an impact without the resident interaction with us, so. Is that something that you sort of foresee in the future, being able to sort of boil the information up to sort of? And is there any aspect of this plan that you would sort of prioritize over the other? There's, you know, as you said, several, you know, priority areas, but are they all at this point fairly equal?
They're all priorities of this plan. I think that's how we developed it, and that's how we worked with our advisory group, is to understand what the priorities were, and I think that's how, that's how we created the goals that we have.
Okay. Thanks for your work on this.
So I think it's just really important to note that this plan was born out of the community and a group in the community called Tipping Point, and we have a couple of members of Tipping Point here with us this evening. And I just want to recognize that, you know, they, they were the ones that gave the push, you know, bringing a petition article. I think it was the May 2020 town meeting, or you can correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm trying to think through based on whether or not I was in the, you know, outside, was I in the gym at the high school? You know, I think it was, it was either May of 2020 or 2021, and, and it was declaring a climate, climate emergency everywhere. And then where do you go from there? And members of Tipping Point engaged select board member Samia and myself in a conversation around having a climate action plan for Shrewsbury, and how they felt that was really important. And it was an excellent opportunity for the select board to partner with residents, to bring to fruition something that was very important to a, a large group of people, and, and working together to make it happen. And so I know that at times, the process was frustratingly slow, but municipal government isn't known for moving quickly, and it takes time to get people on board and to bring them along in a process that is new. And I think that's exactly what happened here, and I think this is a success story of our ability as a local government to work together with residents to bring about a plan that will just be for the greater good. When I read through this plan, I find it very readable. I hope that people do take the time to read through it. I think that there is something in there for everyone if you're looking to reduce your own impact on our environment and do something, you know, for the future. So I, I do hope that people are taking the time to read it and appreciate the work that Tipping Point put into getting us to this point. They've been excellent partners, and I know that we will continue to work with them and look to them for feedback, especially as we go out with the community piece of the plan. I know that for many people, that's the overwhelming part, right? Okay, your boiler no longer works, and you need to get something new, and it's super easy to just get another oil burner. But how do you get a heat pump? What does that look like? And having those people in the community that can help you along the way, I think will make the difference in getting more and more residents on board with things that seem a little bit out of their comfort zone. So lots more work to be done, but I do think this is an excellent place to begin, and I have a lot of confidence in our town staff to work together to make sure that this is kept at the forefront, not only through the budgeting process, as select board member Samia said, but just every day as we think about the decisions that we make day-to-day, and how that has an impact, and how that will bring us closer to achieving these goals. Anybody else? All right. Thank you for the presentation. Mr. Baldinger, I'll just have you stay there, because you're next anyway.
Good to talk to Ash.
Thank you, Kim. It was very nice to, to work with you throughout this process.
Yes, thank you all so much. You've got a great team here.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kim.
All right. Item number eight is a meeting with Keith Baldinger, Assistant Town Manager Operations. And we are going to be talking about solid waste and the solid waste program.
Right.
So, and we have some changes coming along here.
Right. So, so we're going to hear, talk tonight about the solid waste and recycling agreement that we're working on. We, as you may know, in the, this summer, we issued a request for proposals for curbside solid waste and recycling, as our current agreement with Waste Management ends next June. So solid waste and recycling procurement are not required under Mass General law to be advertised, but we chose to use the 30B process to give us the best opportunity to receive the most competitive bids for this work. It is an important, an important contract for the community. We contacted several haulers directly to notify of them, them of the RFP, and we had pre, some, a pre-bid information session that was well attended by multiple haulers. We received three proposals for this contract. They were from E.L. Harvey &amp; Sons Waste Management and Casella Waste Management of Massachusetts. We also received responses prior to the bid opening from Republic Waste and Pellegrino Trucking, who contacted the town, said they were not going to bid on the, the project. The RFP required that vendors submit non-price and price proposals in separate envelopes, and the review process began with our internal team reviewing all the non-price proposals. And the team met multiple times throughout August and September, and we met with Casella and Waste Management in person as we picked those first two proposals right off the bat as the most advantageous to the community. You can, next slide, Justin. So through that process, we, we determined that Casella was the most advantageous to the community. And one of the most appealing, some of the most appealing parts and the reasons for that is their customer service process. They have live agents. They answer phones directly Monday through Friday and on Saturdays. Their customer service is also available via email, which is an option we don't have right now, and through an app called Recollect that will help with, not only with education and communication. It includes collection calendar, scheduling options, as well as a tool like Recycopedia on our town's website for recycling education. Residents don't, do not have to sign up to use the app, but they can, they can sign up and receive notifications via that way also. Programs like the, like curbside mattress collection and food waste collection will be possible with Casella, because they both, they offer both of those now. So once we have an agreement with them, we will start having discussions with how to possibly bring those processes online. And other established programs like Bulky Waste, Whitegood Electronics, pickups will continue very similar to the way they are now. Another, another part of Casella that was advantageous is their reporting system that will allow us to track the, to improve, it's an improved reporting and internal communication system than what we have now. We struggle with that a little bit. Currently, Waste Management does, so, one of, excuse me, one of, one of the things is tracking disposal weights in our buildings. Currently, we don't have that option with Waste Management, and they don't, they will not have that in the future. So we don't actually know how much, how, how much our weights are in our dumpsters at our, at our buildings. And this is a key factor for us, as we move to improve sustainability in our buildings, to reduce solid waste and improve recycling efforts, and potentially implement a food waste aversion program in, in the schools. Currently, we really, we really have no, no ability to track our efforts in these areas. They're all estimated weights. Casella's trucks will also be equipped with cameras for quick identification of improper materials being placed in recycling carts, as well as identifying any waste violations or irregularities. They will also be able to track the set-out rate and participation rate required for some of our grant eligibility. And these cameras can also help with customer service issues related to missed pickups and resident complaints. They can literally tell if you put your trash barrel out on time. So it's kind of a neat feature. Casella currently has the town's contract for curbside yard waste collection. And at the end of this month, they will have completed their first year of collection. They've done an excellent job. We've had a few minor hiccups, but the fact that they have this contract gives us confidence that they understand the daily routes, since the yard waste program is on the same schedule, and we are confident in their communication tendencies and responsiveness. Next slide, Justin. So these are the base collection costs for the, for this current, for this new agreement. It's a six-year agreement. The, um, once we determined Casella was the most advantageous proposal, we did open all the price proposals together. Their year-one cost is actually $18,000 less than Waste Management's current FY '24 collection costs. So there is a savings right away, but, and then if we take, then E.L. Harvey's and Waste Management's FY '25 cost would have been $274,000 more and $284,000 more respectfully. So there's a significant, there's about a 14% difference through, through three, with three companies. So they ended up being also the lowest bidder, which is helpful for us, of course. One of the biggest, next slide, Justin. So some of the changes for this program, so one of the biggest changes to the curbside program is related to recycling. We will change to single-stream recycling. Currently, we do a dual-stream recycling. So you put cardboard out one week and paper and plastic, and plastic and, like, other items out the next week. So now you'll be able to put all of your items together. The only caveat to that is that we will require customers to use recycling carts, that we will supply them, and the town will own them, but every, but every curbside customer will have them. This is the part for us that, and the pay-as-you-throw system will stay essentially the same, same, same bags put out, and then the recycling will just have a cart. The recycling piece is the part where we have to focus most of the outreach efforts to teach people about the new plan and work with them to, Casella will be partnering with us, with us to deliver all of the carts and maintain the carts. The town will own them, so even if at the end of the contract and it's no longer Casella, they'll still be ours. We expect to start our outreach with the community shortly after the new year on all levels. You know, so, social media, tabling events. We will have information evenings probably April, May, and June to get people to understand what the new process is, and then begin our transition, of course, July 1. And we understand transitioning to a new hauler can be challenging. And throughout this review process of these proposals, this was something that weighed on us heavily. We do feel that Casella is a better fit for the community overall, and is more customer service-focused and has a much better system in place for our residents to improve their experience. Casella does, like I said, currently has our yard waste contract, which they have done well on. They have proven their communication process. And we are confident they understand our root system and are ready to partner with, partner with us for community outreach. Glad to take any questions about the agreement. Give you more information as you.
Thanks very much for the presentation. Are there any questions or comments from board members? Mr. Samia?
Thank you. A few questions. So we know the transition last time was a little bumpy. Yeah, you're all on top of communication. Communication is lesser an issue if you have performance. So one of the struggles that Waste Management has, they didn't have the equipment on hand when they started the contract.
Yep.
Casella's done a nice job with the yard waste. They understand the roots. Will they, do they have the capital equipment now? Do they have to order it? What's the thought there?
So they order, they are ordering new capital equipment, but they have stock in place to take care of our contract on July 1. They actually don't expect their new trucks to be in probably till late next year.
Okay. I mean, one of the biggest struggles with roots early on, we had a lot of people missed. They are familiar with our roots, so that is a huge hurdle overcome really early on.
And that was, and that was a big part of our conversation with them when we met with them, because we know how long it takes to get a truck. And we wanted to make sure that they had the rolling stock in place to handle us.
Yeah, it's big that they have the customer service in place five days a week and Saturdays for half the day, right? To have a live body to be able to talk to in New England, so they're going to have that. One other question, if I may. Recourse for non-performance. So.
Sure.
What, what do we have there? They? They.
So, so one thing that we have in this contract, which we also just, we implemented in our yard waste contractor earlier this year, which we did not have in the current Waste Management contract, was liquidated damages. And they are about twenty here on the list. They range from all different types of items. They all have a value as far down as to not picking up a single household or a single street's trash. If they spill something in the road and they don't clean it, there's, there's damages for that. If they don't complete a route for, for an unexcused reason, as opposed to like weather or something like that, there are liquidated damages. And that's actually the biggest one. It's five thousand dollars if they don't finish a route without, you know, excusable reason. Currently, we don't have that option. Like, if they don't finish something, we have, we're beholden to them or we have to negotiate some change in our monthly invoice, which is difficult.
And a lot of times in this last contract, we had town staff literally going out and, early on.
Yep.
Do you have, and last question, if I may. So, in terms of a contact there, so it's great that we have customer service for residents to call. How about us? Do we have a consistent contact or two as well?
We do. We actually have a dedicated team.
Okay.
There are four people that Gosha talks to, can, can talk to. You know, she has, there, there is her regular daily contact that she works with. And then if something escalates, there are, it goes further. And they have backups.
Okay. Thanks a lot.
I have a question. I really like the tracking, the weight of the waste in our public buildings, especially with food waste in schools. As a parent of elementary school kids that have volunteered in the cafeteria and it's, there is a tremendous amount of food that gets wasted in our schools. It's, it's actually fairly shocking. So, is, in addition to the services that they offer, is there any consideration of composting services, curbside composting?
So, that's, so they have, they do have a food waste program in their, in their facilities that they have. It's a compost facility. It's not like an anaerobic digest or anything like that. It's literally farms. So, so we have that opportunity with them to, to do that, whereas currently we don't. We have, Gosha has been working with third-party people to try and understand how that may work. Like, there's a company called Black Earth that does about sixty-five residents in town. They're not set up, they can't handle our schools. But we've been talking with a couple of other companies too. But Casella, Casella, there's an opportunity there too that they could work with us on that program.
I have a couple more questions. That's okay. So, I'm understanding that there'll be recycling bins provided to residents.
Correct.
Is there, is that at any cost to residents? No direct cost?
No cost to residents. We actually, we have almost four, over, almost four hundred thousand dollars in grant funds to help us pay for that. It's about a seven hundred thousand dollar cost to do that. So, with the grant funds and then we, the remaining funds, we will be financing over the life of this contract with Casella.
Okay. With the bins, if, you know, what, what is, like, if there's somebody that has more, you know, recycling than would fit in that bin, what would they then do with those materials?
So, at this point, like, all, we're requiring all materials to be in the bin. If residents find that they need more than that, then they can purchase a bin, a second bin.
Okay. And then the pay-as-you-throw bag program would continue?
Correct.
As is? So, you would provide your own receptacle and?
Yep.
Okay.
And, and the other part of our outreach will be encouraging residents to, to use bins for that too, because that also helps with the efficiency of the pickup.
A few questions. Did Republic Waste or Pellegrino give a reason for not submitting bids?
Republic Waste did not bid because they didn't feel that they had enough time to, to do the bid. And I'm not sure how their business model works. Pellegrino didn't give us a reason other than they weren't going to bid on it.
Okay. And you had mentioned that Casella is buying additional trucks.
Correct.
But they have enough right now for our expected demand starting in July. So, what is the reason for the replacements or buying additional equipment?
So, typically, when you, when you, with a solid waste contract, you want the contractor to come in with equipment that will be reliable and, and last. We did that with Waste Management. It's the same, same model. We want to make sure that they're using the most up-to-date and efficient vehicles possible, as opposed to something that's twenty years old and blows black smoke down the road all day. So, we want them to be clean, efficient, and able, last for the life of the contract.
So, I echo what Mr. Samia said about, you know, we've learned a lot from this most recent contract. And while it's great to have enhanced customer service, I think our ultimate goal is to ensure that customer service is not needed.
Right.
As much as, as maybe it has been. I think that, you know, we've, we've seen, due to a lot of work from town staff, we've seen some leveling off. But understand all of your compelling business reasons. And I do think that you didn't go into this under, you know, low bidder wins. You did your, your qualitative analysis first. Certainly, a fourteen percent cost avoidance of, you know, not renewing with Waste Management is, is very significant. And then that is only enhanced by all of these advantages that you've talked about. I think my final question right now is just, we have another seven-plus months to sort of ride out and we're having a public meeting, so presumably Waste Management is going to know that we're, the town is, is looking at, at an alternative. So, what do you think we would have for safeguards to just ensure that we don't see a decline in, in service in that period?
Well, we have Gosha, who's, who really is on them on a regular basis. And then I did speak with their regional manager. He's fully aware of, of this meeting, because there was a public meeting and I didn't want him to find out a different way. And they're, and, and they're still fully committed to our contract through the rest of June. And he basically told me not to worry. You know, we still worry every day anyways. So, we're just going to continue our diligence with tracking and making sure that they're doing what they're supposed to do. The residents help us with that a lot, so that's good.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
I mean, I, as a, as a Friday customer, I really am thrilled to see that there's going to be some customer service, live customer service on a Saturday morning. There's nothing worse than coming home after four-thirty on a Friday afternoon and your materials haven't been collected and there's no one you can call. One of the things that I know I've spoken to with Mr. Misakar repeatedly is the unfortunate coincidence of their contract starting the week of Fourth of July. And it's a holiday week, so things aren't exactly as they should be. And that was the reason, I think, that Waste Management had such a difficult time. One of the reasons why they had such a difficult time. There were a lot of missed pickups and it's really hard to come back when you don't make a great first impression. So, whatever we can do to support, you know, and I know that you and Gosha and the team, you know, you're probably already thinking of ten different ways that you can support Casella so that they can be successful right out of the gate that first week. It's just so that people understand, you know, that there are all these options for contacting, whether it's email or an app or a phone call. That, that outreach piece is going to be critical. You know, we want to see them be successful in the community. It's been, the yard waste has been, you know, top-notch. Very few complaints, very few missed pickups at, at all. You know, I, and I, and I do want to say, I think that after we changed the routes and balanced the routes for pickups and after Waste Management got their trucks, so they weren't running two different trucks in the community.
Right.
We did see things improve. But again, if you ask ten people, I don't know that ten people are going to tell you that they have a favorable opinion of the job that Waste Management did in Shrewsbury. But I want to just say that my, my materials do get picked up like clockwork at seven-thirty on, on a Friday morning. And if it's not seven-thirty, then I start to worry, because I know that there's something amiss. So, I, you know, I do think that for all the challenges, there was a lot of work done from town staff to correct and redirect and make things better and improve things. And so, I definitely want to recognize that it hasn't been a disaster, right?
Right.
But that we are looking to move forward and for all the reasons that you outlined and, and definitely supportive of that. Thank you. Anybody else?
I have a, just one more question. You know, we were talking about, you know, climate change and sustainability and efficiency this evening. Is there, do they have any plans? I don't even know if it's a thing, but like electric vehicles for the trash, the trash collecting trucks?
Sure, they, they do build them. They, and they are out there and there are a few communities in the country that have them. Actually, I think Somerville has one or two and they, they do their own waste. I think right now, the biggest issue is where we live. With cold temperatures, those, those trucks struggle to get through a day. And also, they're probably extremely, much more expensive than a conventional truck. So, I think we'll see them. I think the technology needs to get there, but I think we will see them at some point.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item number nine under Financial Business, which is to review the FY twenty-twenty-five revenue manual. We all know who you are, but introduce yourself for people at home who might not know who you are.
I'm Alex Martinez. I'm the management analyst.
David Snowden, Assistant Town Manager for Administration Finance. Yeah, go for it.
All right, so this evening, we're just going to give an overview on the FY twenty-five revenue manual, which you should all have. And to start, I'll just review this slide, which provides an overview of the proposed timeline for the development of the FY twenty-five budget. So, this process starts off tonight with a review of the FY twenty-five revenue manual by the Select Board and the Finance Committee, who will review it on Thursday. This takes us into department heads who will receive budget guidance this Friday. And then department budget submissions will be due on December twenty-second. And then throughout January and February, the town manager will develop the initial budget projection, which is fiscal projection one. And that will be published on February sixteenth. And then that takes us into the budget hearings and the, the budget hearings of the Finance Committee in March. And then on to the planning and development of the May twenty-twenty-four Annual Town Meeting Warrant, ultimately leading up to the annual town meeting on May twentieth. So, this slide highlights the revenue anticipated for FY twenty-four, which is the current fiscal year. And this is as of the fall special town meeting. So, the FY twenty-four projected budget is one hundred and eighty-one million, three hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight. And then what we are forecasting for FY twenty-five revenue is one hundred and seventy-nine million, nine hundred and ninety-two thousand, one hundred and fifty-six. This is a zero-point-seven-three percent decrease over FY twenty-four, or about a one-point-three million dollar reduction.
All right. So, the town of Shrewsbury's fiscal capacity is derived from its ability to levy taxes on property and charge certain fees for service. The revenue manual that Alex and I will review has been developed to provide a comprehensive reference of the town's various revenue sources and inform the budgeting process for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five. The complete twenty-twenty-five revenue manual will be published online following this meeting and copies of the document may also be provided upon request. Now, moving to the table. The summary of revenues for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five. The total revenue, as Alex indicated, is one hundred and seventy-nine million, nine hundred and ninety-two thousand, one hundred and fifty-six, again, which is a decrease of approximately one-point-three million or point-seven-three percent than FY twenty-four. Now, if we look at the revenue sources, the property tax levy, in accordance with the provisions of Proposition Two and a Half, will increase to one hundred and two million, four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and one, which is three million, seven hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred and ninety-two, or three-point-eight-three percent greater than FY twenty-four. This includes a base two-and-a-half percent increase over FY twenty-four. Property tax revenue is dedicated to debt service, which has been excluded from the provisions of Prop Two and a Half, will provide nine million, three hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-four, which is three hundred and five thousand, three hundred and five thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight less than FY twenty-four. Total property tax revenues, including the debt exclusions, will exceed FY twenty-four by three million, five hundred and fifty-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three, or three-point-two-four percent. The total projected FY twenty-five tax levy is one hundred and eleven million, seven hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred and four. If you want to go back through the other slide, Justin, as well. So, state aid estimates are made up of three components. Cherry, cherry sheet aid, the annual recurring aid for education, general government, and other categories, tax assumption aid, and highway construction, and improvement through Chapter Nine of Formula. The state aid is projected at twenty-five million, nine hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five, which is approximately a point-seven-nine percent increase over FY twenty-four. And this figure will be updated with the issuance of fiscal projection one if the governor releases budget figures prior to that time. Looking at the utility revenues. Just lost my spot. The town's utility operations include solid waste, water, sewer, and stormwater, are projected to raise twenty-two million, one hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred and one in FY twenty-five. This is an increase of seven hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-five, or three-point-three-three percent. Local receipts are forecasted to yield thirteen million, five hundred thousand, which is an increase of nine hundred and forty-five thousand, or seven-point-five-three percent. Free cash funds are appropriated in accordance with the town's reserve policy and the current projected required appropriation from free cash is three million, one hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four. In our last category, the other remaining available funds, which includes revenues related to the sale of cemetery lots, cemetery trusts, debt service revenue from Selco, internal account transfers, bond interest reserve, the Cable Public Access Fund, and other Selco revenue to further reduce the tax levy are projected at three million, four hundred and ninety thousand, nine hundred and forty-two in FY twenty-five. All right, we'll go to the next one, Justin. Thank you. Property tax is the primary source of revenue for virtually every Massachusetts municipality. In Shrewsbury, the property tax represents approximately sixty percent of the annual revenues. Just, and another, property taxes are levied on real property and personal property. And state law mandates that the communities update their property values at least every five years and obtain state certification that those values represent full and fair cash amounts. The last reevaluate, revaluation was conducted in FY twenty-one. Now, if we're looking at the forecast assumptions for the tax levy, some of this we covered earlier, but we'll review it quickly. Property values and new growth for FY twenty-five are preliminary estimates and used to project the levy limit. The FY twenty-four levy limit was ninety-eight million, seven hundred and two thousand, two hundred and forty-five. The two-and-a-half increase would allow for FY twenty-five to be two million, four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-six. New growth from construction not previously on the tax roll is expected to add one million, two hundred and sixty thousand to the levy. And this estimate is further supported by the three-year, five-year, and ten-year averages of tax levy growth historically. In addition, an additional nine million, three hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-four is added to the tax levy to cover the cost of debt service for projects approved by voters as a Proposition Two and a Half overrides slash exclusions. And the added debt exclusion amount is net of other available revenue sources dedicated to debt service is estimated at six hundred and twenty-one dollars. Again, the final projection for FY twenty-five for the tax levy- Again, the final projection for FY 25 for the tax levy is 111,747,504, which is, again, is an increase of 3.5 million over FY 24. All set.
All right, as Dave mentioned, state aid is projected to bring in 25,920,825. And state aid is the restricted and unrestricted aid that municipalities receive from the state budget. As Dave mentioned, the governor typically releases the initial state budget in January and then is developed further throughout the coming months after that. So with this projection, we have applied a conservative 1% increase to most of these categories where applicable, and we'll update these figures as the state budget is released. So general government aid is the second largest category, and this includes local and a, local aid and additional assistance, as well as reimbursements for veterans' benefits and the Chapter 90 funding, which is our funds allocated for roadways and capital improvements. The largest category is school aid, and this is direct aid for schools based on the number of peoples enrolled in the community. There's also a category for tax exemptions, and there are several categories of property tax exemptions that we as a municipality receive a partial reimbursement for. It includes reimburse exemptions for veterans, blind persons, surviving spouses, and elderly who meet certain exemption requirements. And then the last category is cherry sheet offsets, which are grant funds for school choice tuition and the library, and those are reserved directly for those expenditures by those departments and cannot be used for generally available revenue.
All right, jump into the utility revenue, which consists of funds generated through the water, sewer, stormwater, and solid waste enterprises. Water rates are reviewed regularly by the Water Commissioners, which is also the Select Board, to ensure that fees generated accurately support the costs to supply clean drinking water to the community. Likewise, sewer and stormwater rates are reviewed regularly by the Sewer Commissioners to ensure that the fees generated accurately support the costs of those respected enterprises. And lastly, the pricing of both the pays you throw bags and bulkway stickers may be adjusted to ensure the receipts received by the solid waste enterprise offset approximately 50% of those enterprises' costs, of that enterprise's costs. So looking at this table, starting at the top and working our way down. The FY 25 Solid Waste Enterprise revenue forecast reflects the increase in the pays you throw bag fees that went to effect July 1st, 2021. And at this point, revenues are projected to remain level with fiscal year 2024. Fiscal year 25 sewer revenue projections were tabulated from figures provided in a memo to the Sewer Commissioners dated June 12th, 2023, and in accordance with the sewer rate analysis approved by the Sewer Commissioners on March 15th, 2021. In total, across the three sewer revenue accounts, fiscal year 25 revenues are estimated at 419,595, or 3.59% greater than FY 24. Fiscal year 25, stormwater revenues are projected to remain level with FY 24. And finally, the water revenue projections were tabulated from the April 25th, 2023 Water Fee Analysis conducted out of the Town Manager's Office. The study was conducted at the outset of setting the FY 24 water rate schedule. It includes such water revenues as Water Conservation Fund, Article Closeout, Water System Improvements, the retained earnings, non-water rate revenue, and water rate revenue. FY 25 revenues are estimated to be 295,000 greater, or approximately 5% over FY 24. Next slide, please. The Cable Public Access Fund is, also falls under the management as an enterprise. May 16th, 2018, the Public Education Governmental or PEG Access Programming and Service Agreement was signed between the Town of Shrewsbury and the nonprofit Shrewsbury Media Connection for the purpose of providing PEG access programming. The revenue for this fund is comprised of the franchise fees collected for the use of the town's cable television, public education, and governmental access enterprise. As per the agreement, the town shall provide 4.25% of gross annual revenue from cable operations to provide for PEG programming, of which is paid to the town by the cable licensee, Selco. The projection for FY 25 Cable Public Access Fund revenue at this time is 498,581. All right, Justin.
Local receipts are our locally generated revenues other than real and personal property and are generally dependent, more dependent on economic conditions. We use historical trend analysis and focus on prior year actuals to determine these projections. So for FY 25, we're projecting 13.5 million in local receipts. Almost 50% of that is generated from motor vehicle excise tax. Motor vehicle excise tax did see a bit of a downturn during the pandemic and caused by the chip shortage, but revenue in this category has rebounded very well over the past couple of years, and we anticipate that trend to continue. The other excise tax category is comprised of hotel, meals, and cannabis excise tax. Meals tax revenue has also rebounded well from the pandemic, and we are projecting to hold cannabis excise level funded with FY 24, just given the limited trend analysis data that we have on this category. Given the current migrant housing situation facing the state, we are not anticipating that we will receive hotel excise revenue in FY 25. But we anticipate that we will see some funds from short-term rentals. Short-term rentals are Airbnbs or, you know, vacation houses that are rented out, and there are currently 52 short-term rentals registered in the town. The next category is landfill revenue, which is the annual fee collected for materials deposited into the landfill by wheel operator, and also the funds received for metal recovery. We are projecting to level fund landfill revenue for FY 25. Department fees are just that, fees collected by various town departments. FY 23 actuals did include a large lump sum of opioid funding that we received through the federal settlement. So we do not anticipate seeing that large of a lump sum in coming years, but we anticipate department fees to remain consistent. The next category is license and permits, which is a category that you can see historically has done very well. These are permit fees from residential and commercial building projects. But however, there are limited large-scale projects on the horizon, so we've taken a bit more of a conservative approach for this category. The next category is interest income and penalties. Investment income can vary widely depending on the market interest rates and available cash balances, as well as investment practices. We work very closely with our investment firm Bartholomew to monitor and review our town's investments, and we anticipate that interest income will remain very stable. As you can see, we do not forecast for rental income. This is a revenue category that is very minimal. We receive $12 per unit rented at the Edgereb mobile home park, which is why you see actuals historically, but it's not factored into revenue forecasts. And then the last local receipts category is the remaining revenue sources. And this includes various fees and reimbursements, including a pilot payment from the Shrewsbury Housing Authority and Selco, and has historically included the cannabis impact fees that were generated from our host community agreements. That fee in particular is going to be a very limited revenue source moving forward, so we are not estimating revenue for that category. So as in total, local receipts are projected to yield 13.5 million, which is 7.5% greater than FY 24. And then just to touch on FY 24, so through the end of October, we have collected about 3.3 million, or 26% of the FY 24 budget in local receipts. And then this next slide, the graph on the left depicts local receipts budget versus actual from FY 19 to FY 23. And as you can see, historically, our actuals have well exceeded budget revenues in this category.
All right, free cash is certified as of July 1st each year by the Commonwealth's Department of Revenue and represents a portion of general fund surplus revenue that is unrestricted and available for appropriation. These funds, once certified, may be used to support supplemental appropriations during the year to support the ensuing fiscal year's budget, to reduce the tax levy, or serve as emergency reserves. Free cash is generated when the actual operating results compare favorably with the budget, such as when actual revenues exceed the original estimates and/or when actual expenditures are less than the amounts that were appropriated. Free cash is also affected by increases or decreases in uncollected property tax taxes, deficits in non-general fund, um, general fund funds, and any other legally incurred operating deficits, for example, our snow removal budget. The DOR recommends that the town maintain a free cash balance equal to no less than 5% of their fiscal year operating budget. And the Select Board has adopted a fiscal policy endeavoring to generate certified free cash equivalent to the amount of 3% to 5% of the annual general fund budget, while amounts in excess of 2.5% of the proposed operating budget will be available for capital or other one-time expenses. It should be noted, over the past decade, the average free cash balance as a percentage of the prior year operating budget has, is calculated at 5.44%. The town's free cash balance as of June 30th, 2023 was 9,090,802. In accordance with the town's policy, it's recommended that 3,183,784 of the existing balance be appropriated towards the FY 25 balance for, there's several warrant articles. The Lakewood-Sigamon Commission, which we generally put 35,000 to, funding the general stabilization at 775,000, support of the counseling and educational services at 346,000, funding the insurance trust account at 20,000, and then funding medical expenses for retired police and fire personnel at 7,784. And then lastly, 2 million be devoted to capital improvements. All right, next slide. Thank you. Revenues comprised within this category include free cash and Selco revenue to further reduce the tax rate. Revenues for FY 25 will be held level with FY 24, with the exception of the Selco pilot. The IT pilot revenue will be updated throughout the budget process as information becomes available and reflects anticipated changes to the franchise agreement between the town and Selco. The projection for FY 25 reduced levy funds is 1,536,090.
Next up is the other available funds category, which is a very diverse category. Revenues in this category are related to the sale of cemetery lots, debt service revenue from Selco and Title V loans, internal account transfers, and CPA funds. So in FY 24, you'll see for actuals, we saw an influx of revenue related to CPA funds and account transfers. The account transfers were tied to transfers made at the May Annual Town Meeting related to the Tobin Hill Bridge reconstruction project and then the Beale Elementary School project. So those funds were identified and reallocated to other projects. And then also you'll see about 1 point, almost 1.3 million in CPA project funds. So looking at FY 25, the sale of cemetery lots is level funded, and light in cable access revenue is associated with the declining debt service repayments. At this time, there are no project proposals for CPA funds, but this category and account transfers, we anticipate, you know, will, those will be more accurately projected through the development of the FY 25's budget and as we get closer to town meeting. So the total projection for other available funds at this time is 1,954,852.
All right. And in recap, the total revenue for FY 25 is projected at 179,992,156, again, which is a decrease of approximately 1.3 million, or 0.73% than FY 24. I'd be happy to entertain any questions you have on any of these revenue sources at this time.
Great, thank you very much for the presentation. Are there any questions from board members? Mr. Samia.
Just a quick question. So local receipts 26% year-to-date, pretty standard, right?
Yeah.
The motor vehicle excise is going to be early in calendar 24.
Yep. So for FY 23, through the end of October, we had collected 24.87%.
Thank you. Just one quick poll. Any other risk in this that we see with any of our revenue sources throughout 24, any concerns? Interest income is pretty good. We budgeted conservatively. Rates are higher. Have a balance for multitude of reasons, but any areas of concern in 24 that we may need to carry in 25? Or things like, our local receipts are pretty much on par with prior years? Anything at all?
I think maybe just kind of the, the uncertainty with the hotels' excise tax. We'll have a much better understanding once we get the next quarterly payment from the state of what that may look like. But that's, that and then the cannabis impact, which is going away.
And one more.
Other thing that I would add to that is state revenue is about 6% lower than estimated thus far through the end of October. And state revenue growth, at least for unrestricted general government aid, has been, those two have been tied together. So while there is year-over-year growth in state revenue, it's not meeting current expectations and have a long way to go in the fiscal year. But there is some concern at the state level that that growth wouldn't be as strong as it was projected between '23 and '24. So it's an area of concern, although we're not very aggressive in that, you know, forecasted category only 1%. So we should be able to mitigate the lack of performance in state revenue at this point.
Took us 12 years to get back to where we were in 2008, so it's not something we've ever budgeted aggressively. Just a quick question for you, Mr. Miseskar. So from a revenue standpoint, understanding we're preliminary at this point in budgeting, and we're working through it, and we are not going through the expense side, but are these revenues consistent with what we've forecasted out and modeled, modeled out through the last few years? And meets or exceeds what we've looked at in the past?
Generally exceeds, but we're still in the, in a revenue projection situation where with regards to the, the recurring discussion of an override, we're still at that five-year period. There's nothing that indicates we're any stronger than that. So it's still better than where we thought we'd be in March of 2021. But as you go out in time and the numbers get bigger, you need more money each and every year to satisfy that ensuing year. So we're in a very strong situation, generally speaking. Some of these projects that are conceptual, if they continue to move through the planning process, that'll give us a lot more comfort in what we'd be able to put in for new growth in ensuing years and licenses and permit fees. That interest in the community stays really strong, which we're really proud of, but we got to keep getting those projects through the pipeline.
Okay, thank you. As the numbers, this is typical during the budget process. The numbers will mature as information becomes available. But what is certain is that we'll have another predictable budget cycle in terms of knowing that we'll have the revenue that we need to move forward as part of the overall override design, which is important.
One of the things that isn't in our revenue model for utilization is the override stabilization fund. So that is an indication of our over, or outperforming our original financial forecast. So that's another good step where we don't intend to put any money in. So it'd be the first year that we don't put any money in, but we're also not taking any additional dollars out, which keeps us in a really strong position in the override stabilization fund.
Yeah, which resulted in the latest bonding, right?
Very helpful, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I wanted to just say something on his point, unless you're going to build on his point.
No, no, go for it.
So then, this year then, with, for the override stabilization, would then, we tip over next year? tip over next year and we would need to start drawing down, correct?
Absolutely. Yeah, I don't see any possibility for not doing that for FY26. Yeah.
Go ahead, thank you.
Um, we, uh, we had a conversation last week about, um, our projected budget, um, our projected revenues, and, um, you had a, a really helpful explanation of why, um, our local receipts budget is always, it, uh, we always outperform the local, uh, receipts budget and why we wouldn't want to adjust for that.
Sure.
Um, so I don't know if, if, for people listening, it was really helpful and kind of clarified why we don't make an aggressive change on that.
Yeah, so, uh, first and foremost, uh, one of the primary reasons that most cities and towns, um, conservatively estimate local receipts is because it's a critical component, as Mr. Snowden talked about, of developing, uh, free cash. And the state advises and recommends, and the GFOA, Government Finance Officers Association, advises and recommends that we have those free reserves on hand, at least five percent of the budget, so, um, you know, we're purposely setting local receipts revenue to contribute a significant amount to the development of free cash or, you know, year-end fund balance for us. Also, um, we're projecting revenues that will start receiving, you know, eight months from now and stop receiving twenty months from now, so a lot can change in the general overall macroeconomic setting, and we saw that play out, you know, with chip shortages and supply shortages and, and local receipts revenue are the most elastic revenues that we have, and they change based on economic conditions. So, um, we're continuing to build our data sets despite that, and, um, we're, we're taking a deeper dive into understanding, um, how we can track pro, uh, projects that are in pre-permitting, permitting, and moving towards, uh, actual issuance of building permits to empower us to use and, and better estimate our new growth revenues. Um, and we're also testing some data models, or will be testing some data models to see if there's any indication from housing unit development to motor vehicle excise, so we do wanna get closer. It will be easier to, um, get closer once we satisfy our general reserves and have enough money in our general stabilization account, where we're not taking basically a million dollars out of free cash and putting into stabilization, so once we get a core amount of stable reserves on hand, then we'll be able to be a little bit more aggressive with it. But if we missed and got aggressive and we fell short, at some point in the fiscal year, we'd have to stop or, not stop, but reduce spending. So, it would feel good, really, at the beginning of the fiscal year, we might be able to add employees or equipment or something like that, but by the time we got to the end of that fiscal year, um, we're relying upon receiving each and every dollar that we're projecting, and we would have to freeze, freeze spending if we saw, uh, a failed performance in, in our revenue model.
Thank you. And can I just, um, make another?
Sure.
On that, so, um, as far as, um, the importance of free cash and, um, the general stabilization fund in regards to our AAA bond rating, um, we just got, you know, official word that we retained our AAA bond rating for another year, so if you, if you wouldn't mind just giving a, kind of a quick...
Yeah, so, um, so our cash reserves are critical, it's a key component of, uh, what the rating agencies look at, and stable, general stabilization and free cash are the two primary components that most cities and towns are looked to, and then we also have the, uh, override stabilization account that S&amp;P looks very favorably upon us for having, so, um, achieving or exceeding policy level, which is also on the agenda this evening to review those financial policies, is, is critical, uh, in our overall bond rating. It, it shows our ability to be responsive to, uh, changing economic conditions where revenues may, uh, be strained in future years without impacting our services to residents. So, um, it's one of the top considerations that state reports and other rating agencies look to, is how much money we have on hand.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for the presentation. Um, we did, we really put you through the wringer during our workshop, we asked a lot of questions, and we did about two hours on, on the, uh, revenue manual, so again, this is, um, excellent work, and I know how much goes into it behind the scenes from both of you, and will continue to work on it until, um, town meeting passes a budget, so thank you very much for your efforts and for the presentation this evening.
Thank you.
That brings us to item number ten, which is to review and act on the financial policies. This is something that we do yearly. And our financial policies, as you just heard, are instrumental in developing our budget. So, we're gonna review and act to adopt the core financial policies for the town, and, um, as I just said, these basically are the foundation for our decision-making when it comes to, um, funds and what we're going to fund and what our goals are, and I know that Mr. Mizikar has a brief presentation to run through, or maybe Mr. Snowden's gonna run through it. Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, I'll run through it quick, and, um, we can definitely dive into any greater detail as needed, all right? All right, next slide. Thank you. So, um, the plan for the next couple minutes would be a brief introduction of the fiscal policies, what are the key policy objectives, uh, we'll very briefly review the, the policies themselves, so we have reserve policies, budget submission, capital planning, debt management, and then the final recommendations. Next slide, please. All right, so, an introduction. The adoption of formal financial policies provides instructive guidance and promotes consistency as local officials plan, direct, monitor, and protect municipal assets and resources. These policies form the foundation of all financial decision-making processes and are expounded upon throughout the short-term goals and objectives. So, the policies we are reviewing today were initially reviewed and adopted by the Select Board November 2018, and in each ensuing year, the board then reviews these policies again and updates as needed. Um, I think the last major update was, um, added to the policies after the, um, the override was established. Next slide, please. All right, the key policy objectives, as listed here, one, to ensure the appropriate financial capacity for present and future needs, two, to provide full value to residents by delivering quality services as financially efficiently as possible, three, to conform to general law, uniform professional standards, and municipal best practices, four, to maintain and achieve the highest credit rating realistically possible, and five, to, to promote transparency and public discourse. All right, next slide, please. All right, so we're gonna look at the reserve policy. Um, the Town of Shrewsbury reserves include a general stabilization, an override stabilization, free cash, um, operating budget reserve fund, and enterprise and utility reserve funds. Overall, the level of financial reserves is critical to maintaining and improving the town's bond rating, um, which I'm hoping a lot of this is repeat, but it helps let it sink in for everybody, which ensures sufficient funds to manage unanticipated needs. Funds shall be appropriated from reserves only after analysis has been prepared by the town manager and presented to the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen. The analysis shall provide sufficient evidence to establish that the remaining balance is adequate to offset potential downturns in revenue sources and provide sufficient cash balance for daily financial needs. We're gonna now go to each one of the reserves very briefly, so the first one here, um, the general stabilization fund is the town's main reserve fund designed to provide financial stability for all aspects of town operations while improving the town's credit worthiness and flexibility. The policy indicates that the town shall maintain a general stabilization fund of at least five percent of the annual general fund budget for the purpose of extraordinary or unforeseen expenditures. The town will endeavor to leave this balance unspent, except in the event of emergency or extraordinary unforeseen events. If it's necessary to draw down from this general stabilization fund, the town will ensure that it is restored through the appropriation of revenues such as free cash or any other lawful appropriation. Next slide, please. This is the override stabilization. The town shall fund the override stabilization fund with tax levy dollars in accordance with the requirements of specific commitments of a Proposition Two and a Half override. These funds will be drawn upon by town meeting and appropriated into the operating budget to preserve service levels and prolong the duration between, um, future Proposition Two and a Half override requests. Next slide, please. All right, free cash. Free cash, as we mentioned earlier, certified July 1st each year by the DOR, and represents a portion of the general fund surplus revenue, again, that is unrestricted and available for appropriation. Uh, the town will endeavor to generate certified free cash equivalent to three to five percent of the annual general fund budget. Amounts in excess of two point five percent of the proposed operating budget will be available for capital or other one-time expenses. Free cash shall not be depleted in any one year, so that the following year's calculation will begin with a positive balance. And this goes to the, the point we were talking earlier about local receipts, but conservative revenue projections and departmental expenditures shall be managed to produce excess income and departmental budget turnbacks when possible, and free cash may be used for certain one-time expenditures such as capital projects, emergencies, other unanticipated expenditures, or to support other reserves. Next one, please. Operating budget reserve fund. Annually, the town funds a reserve fund within the operating budget, which is managed by the Finance Committee to cover unforeseen and extraordinary expenses, operating expenses for that particular fiscal year. The town shall fund operating budget reserve fund within the operating budget, which shall be equal or greater to than five percent of the expense line items, um, we categorize them as our four, five, six, uh, line items of the proposed operating budget. The Town of Shrewsbury utilizes enterprise fund accounting to manage all of its utility services, I'm sorry, um, this is the enterprise and utility reserve funds. In accordance with Financial Management Best Practices, um, using the enterprise fund, helps to ensure equity when charging for the services of these utilities. Uh, user fees cover the costs of operation for utilities rather than relying on the general tax levy. The town shall maintain reserves of at least five percent of the annual reoccurring operating costs for each utility fund for the purpose of extraordinary or unforeseen expenditures. Reserves may be dedicated for infrastructure replacement and enhancement as needed to ensure the viability of the utility. Special-purpose stabilization funds for each utility shall be established and funded so long as the current capital needs of the system are being satisfied. In extraordinary circumstances, the town general stabilization account may be used to cover expenses of utilities. Next slide. All right, so now we're moving from the reserve policies to the submission of the budget and the budget message. Um, so, hold on. If I can get my computer to cooperate, there we go. Submission of the budget and budget message. The town manager is required to present a balanced budget in accordance with the timing and other provisions required by Section 16 of the Town Manager Act as amended. The budget shall be a living document that not only presents figures but also an accompanying narrative that illustrates the financial plan of the town for the budget period. This is, this is important, it establishes the need for transparency for the community. Our capital planning. All right. To effectively maintain the town's infrastructure and protect the value of its capital assets, this policy outlines guidance for planning, reviewing, and coordinating capital improvements. Adherence to the capital policy helps the town meet its capital needs despite limited resources, and this policy establishes a framework for long-term capital improvements. It sets guidelines and expectations for all town departments and planning and requesting for capital projects, and outlines consensus budgetary goals for Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. And then we can move on, if that's all right? Yep. Debt management. Under the requirements of the federal and state laws, the town may periodically issue debt obligations to finance the construction, reconstruction, or acquisition of infrastructure and other assets, um, or to refinance existing debt. The town will issue and manage debt obligations in such a manner as to obtain the best long-term financial advantage and will limit the amount of debt to minimize the impact on the taxpayers. Debt obligations, which include general obligation bonds, revenue bonds, bond anticipation notes, um, excuse me, lease and purchase agreements, and any other debt obligations permitted to be issued under Massachusetts law, will only be issued to construct, reconstruct, or purchase capital assets that cannot be acquired with current revenues. And then, lastly, um, so that, that sort of is a cursory overview of, of the policies. Within the fiscal policy document, we do have a little bit more detail on, on each one of those figures and some of the steps to be taken, um, but reviewing those policies, the current recommend, there are no recommended changes to be made to the, the financial policies and plan laid out, um, and as they are in alignment with the 2030 strategic plan and the current policies would help us meet the, the needs for the fiscal 25 budget.
Thank you. Are there any questions? All right, I know they're very straightforward, we've been approving them basically without much change since 2018, and it has served us very well, as we'll see in our next agenda item when we talk about the bonds that we will be, um, obtaining for water system improvements. Thank you for the presentation. Take a motion.
A motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, item number eleven is to review and act on the sale of bonds associated with water system improvements. Mr. Mizikar.
So, board members, as you know, and has been discussed a few times this evening, um, we saw an, uh, updated bond rating prior to issuing, uh, bonds for debt associated with, uh, the improvements to the water system, and we were, again, awarded a AAA, uh, rating with a stable outlook, uh, that's a testament to the diligence and not only our policy and planning work, but the execution of our budget, uh, the commitments that we've made through the override and the overall financial management within the community, so, um, we're very proud of the AAA bond rating, and that has, again, yielded, uh, positive results, so we're seeking your approval this evening to award, uh, one short-term note and one, uh, long-term general obligation bond that were bid in the open public market, um, on November 8th, 2023. For the short-term interest, or for short-term borrowing, which is a bond anticipation note, we received five bids with the lowest net interest cost of four point zero-two percent, a bid put in by Fidelity Capital Markets, uh, and for the long-term note, uh, general obligation bond, at a total interest cost of three point seven one two-two-four-five percent. There were eight bidders that bid on that three point, um, seven-five million dollar note, and it was, again, the lowest interest rate was offered by Fidelity Capital Markets. So, uh, these are both, the million-dollar, uh, short-term note is for the design of a PFOS treatment plant, uh, and the long-term notes are for capital improvements to the water system, including, uh, water mains. So, happy to answer any questions, but we're recommending the board, uh, award the ban and the twenty-year note to Fidelity Capital Markets.
Are there any questions? All right, I'll take a motion.
Motion to approve the sale of bonds to fund improvements to the water system as follows, uh, general obligation bonds in the principal amount of three million seven hundred and forty thousand, um, three hu, sorry, three million seven hundred and forty thousand to Fidelity Capital Markets, and bond anticipation notes in the principal amount of one million to Fidelity Capital Markets.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We've already done item number twelve, so we're gonna move on to item number thirteen, which is to review and act on the one-day beer and wine license request of Abigail Scaff Broken Creek Vineyard for the Shrewsbury Town Center Association Yuletide Market, located at Five Church Road on December 2nd, 2023, from 2:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number fourteen is to review and act on the one-day beer and wine license request of JT Ethier Greater Good Imperial Brewing Company for the Shrewsbury Town Center Association Yuletide Market located at Five Church Road on December 2nd, 2023, from 2:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number fifteen is to review and act on the one-day alcohol license request of Jason Pallett Shrewsbury Rotary Club for the Shrewsbury Town Center Association Yuletide Market, located at Five Church Road on December 2nd, 2023. located at Five Church Road on December second, twenty-twenty-three, from two PM to nine PM.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna skip item number sixteen for right now, because that's bringing us into executive session, and I'm gonna move on to correspondence. Item number seventeen is an email received October twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three, from Joe Sawyer, Superintendent of the Shrewsbury Public Schools regarding Beale School being named a model school. Um, what this basically means is that Beale School, um, was named a model school by the Mass School Building Authority. Um, this is the third time, so it's like the trifecta here in Shrewsbury, where one of our schools, um, was recognized with this honor, the, the high schools Sherwood and Beale, and I believe no other district has that honor. It means that the MSBA uses, um, the design and adapts it to other school projects because they already know that it's a successful design. So that's definitely something to be very proud of. Item number eighteen is an email received November first, twenty-twenty-three, from Akash Joswell, sixteen Pheasant Hill Drive, regarding an urgent concern about blasting, um, near Hills, Hills Farms community. Um, there were several residents that signed on to this email with concerns about the blastings and the effect of the blasting, um, associated with the construction work at Point at Hills Farm. Um, Mr. Mizikar did reach back out to, uh, Mr. Joswell, and no response had been received from him or any other of the residents listed after the init, the, uh, request for additional information on November second, twenty-twenty-three. Did you have anything else you wanted to add?
No, I don't.
Okay, and then item number nineteen is an email received November second, twenty-twenty-three, from Kira Lahones, Shrewsbury Police Department regarding the Shrewsbury Police Department newsletter, which is available on, um, I, I accessed it off their Facebook page, but it's probably on their website also. Uh, it's really, um, a great way to take a look and see, um, what this SPD is up to. And I also thought that there was a section about, um, by the numbers, basically. It kinda tells you, um, how many different calls, uh, the police department handles in a month, and it's, it's eye-opening. There's a lot going on, um, they're a busy department. All right, so we're gonna backtrack now and go to item number sixteen, which is an executive session to consider the purchase exchange or lease of value of real property because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the board under General Law, Chapter thirty-A, Section twenty-one-A six, for sixty-nine through seventy-one Edgewater Avenue. And we will not be coming back, um, into open session, so, I'll take a motion.
Motion to move to executive, executive session.
Second.
Okay, and I believe we need a roll call vote to go into executive session, so I am going to start with, um, Select Board Member Flynn.
Aye.
Select Board Member Samia.
Aye.
Select Board Member Conlin.
Aye.
Select Board Member Garcia.
Aye.
And myself, aye. So, we are adjourned for now.